We will reconvene, our meeting here. Welcome to everybody. Asked lots of questions, Olivia. It's nice to have you back there. Because you will hear the guts of what goes on. If we don't have the money, we don't do it. Sometimes we think we're going to get it, but we still don't put it until we're sure about it. And ahead of everything else, Lance, you were there. I know how much you worked on this. And you see Paul, I know a bit of this is his work. But I'm always comfortable going into these meetings because you have it so well organized. So, welcome to all. Lance Metzler, take it away.
Yes, sir. So, in your packet of information in front, you'll see the vision, mission, and strategic focus, things like that. If you'll go with that and, as we do every year, look at the vision and the mission statement, if there's anything to modify, just let us know. It hasn't changed in several years. It's pretty comprehensive. But if there's anything that needs to be changed on the vision or the mission, just give me the direction.
And I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners, unless something is jumping out right now, they have license to bring it back to the leader day.
Absolutely, yeah. And I'll pause until you tell me, continue.
It's all quiet on the southern front.
All right. Then let's go to the focus areas. I'm going to just point out some areas that we have made strides in this year. If you look at focus area one, economic development, create ready economic development sites. Just the three to bring up. One is the new street industrial park in Eden. It was about a million dollar grant from Golden Leaf for 15 acres. And all of this, I'd say Lee and her staff have done a great job of getting these funds. Nine hundred dollars from Golden Leaf for a lot. Eleven over in the regional industrial park. And then the corporate park, park at Southwest of Roy Carrish property with the own tax building and the spec building. Examining local government regulations and ordinances. As you guys know, you passed the land use plan and you adopted the UU on August of 2021. Excuse me, 2022, 2021. And the dimension standard table is on September of 2022. Continuing for options to increase the county's attractiveness investors. Obviously, working on the connect broadband grant, increase the water and sewer capacity on the southwest side of the county. Increase efforts for quality of life, including rivers and trail walks. Open discussion on, and this is one that I've brought to your attention at some point in time. Don may be able to help elaborate a little bit. But as we know, in Danville, they're building a casino that way. And we have talked briefly about extending, potentially working with Red Bull to extend water and sewer northward in order to be able to develop that part of the county on 29. Don, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so I've had several conversations with the city manager and a couple of the council members. And they seem open to that possibility. There's already land changing hands in that quarter. So, we know that people are looking at that. And quite frankly, I believe that we have just about developed all that we can develop in the regional industrial park, the large lots anyway. So, I know that there had been some interest in looking for other areas that we might could do another industrial park in that quarter. Certainly, we'd provide that if it had the water and sewer capabilities. And Reason certainly has the capabilities to supply that. So, I would ask that we do work with them and see if we can work that out so that we can attract growth through that quarter.
And we've got, I think it's March the 3rd. We're going to meet with Summer and her public utility just to open discussions, to find out if anything exists or not.
Sure.
And Duke Power will make sure they have adequate energy on the western side. I know that Kevin and I had spoken to Hank. And there was a little concern, but I think that they'll be able to work through all that at some point, I hope.
And they are committed to making sure that Duke is not a hindrance to any project. And I know there's also some planning to develop another substation. It lives close by.
It's just, what did you say, the materials?
It takes a little bit of time.
But I'll tell you what, my conversation with Hank and his transformed man is they are willing to talk with any developer on face-to-face basis. If they can't provide the necessaries at the timeframe the developer wants, they can at least give them an accurate estimate of the timeframe before they get the stuff. I think that's significant. And I'm satisfied you're doing the best I can.
Yeah.
Okay. The invitation plan for water and sewer, as you guys know, we've got close to, and you'll see on this upcoming agenda, forty million dollars to go towards the extension of water and sewer and enhancing the plant over in Madison. They are going to hear the agreement. Mayodan, excuse me, Madison's already approved the agreement. Mayodan is going to hear it next week. And hopefully, they'll approve it. Then it comes to you all for approval after that. So, it's still, it's in the process. Clyde's got it going great, and it's good. Focus on commercial development. Again, most, as you know, most commercial development develops where infrastructure is right now in the cities and towns. So, we're working with the cities and towns to help them however we can. Enhance retention, expansion of plants. Obviously, the EDC is working very hard on that. We showcase the, we rotate, do a rotation showcase down in the lobby. We have got small businesses and social media sites for expansion and retention. And there are some, several expansions, according to Lee, that are in the process. They're just confidential right now. I think she's got closed session for this meeting to discuss something with you guys. Promote, and is this beneficial to go through these? Okay, good. Just want to make sure I don't waste your time. Promote support, small business development. That's just a continual process. Again, that's working with the cities and the towns. The RCC has a small business office now. They got Jennifer Lester. From what I understand, she's doing a pretty good job. She has an office at the EDC, so they often collaborate if they need to. Collaborate effectively with municipalities. Again, I think we're doing that. The managers just met earlier. We had lunch together in Madison. And we work well together. I think that now that we've gotten together, before, the county wasn't invited to the manager/mayor's meetings. Now, actually, Kevin, was it you? I think you and I started, or maybe Charlie, started meeting with him again. And so, I think that we're all kind of cohesive now. We're working, continuing to work towards that. Focus area two, organization, organizational efficiency and effectiveness with the consolidation of Health and Human Services. They are doing a great job. You can't really see it, but they're doing a great job sharing administration and financial staff. And when they're able to maximize cost allocation, typically with public health, we don't get a whole lot of funding other than what the county funds, but, or feeds. But with, if we can maximize it with DSS, which Felicity and her staff are doing, they're maximizing as much as we can with public health. We're splitting, like I said, we're splitting the budget. It's, the renovations are going well, both upstairs and downstairs. I think that staff is very pleased with their working environment. If you hear any differently, please let me know. And I'll make sure I address them out somewhere.
You're talking about renovations at DSS?
Yes, sir.
The, I think we admitted the bathroom area in the renovations.
Did we?
I don't believe it's happened at this point, anyway.
And I don't know that they have any suggestions or any requests due to the bathrooms that I'm aware of.
Okay, I'll give them.
I know he's right. Sir, back again, okay.
Well, they're just, the entire building was dated. And we did everything that the public could see. But from the standpoint of the employees and I would just say a comfort level, you're walking back 50 years when you go through those doors. So, I don't know what the cost would be, but it may be worth looking at that.
We had like one sort of small cost overrun. So, we had a pretty fair contingency fund in that project along with, we're going to be getting back about thirty-two grand in sales tax that I've calculated so far. So, if they want us to look at doing some renovations to the restrooms, I think there's plenty of money left in that project to do that.
And again, it's an equal comfort thing that maybe worth looking at.
It hasn't been brought to our attention, but I would certainly.
I'll talk to you.
Okay.
Well, I've been through it.
The bathrooms?
Well, I checked. I did check, I did check the bathrooms. That's why I'm sure that he's correct, nothing has been done.
Is it, is it, it's not the public, when it's the?
The employees.
Okay, all right.
The, but the rest of it, I've had nothing but positive comments from the employees and their upgraded cubicles. Yes, I agree with that.
And the sliding door will be in at some point in time.
They're in.
Are they already in?
Yes, sir.
I'll have to go check it out, we've got time after. All right, so we'll check out the bathrooms. Efficient, effectively utilize county-owned space and property. Promote disposal of unused property. Again, we discussed the DSS remodeling. Don't have many other properties we can dispose of. We are going to move, again, we are going to move the library administration to Stonewall. That will be one of the last ones, unless you can think of other property or.
What's the timeline? I mean, this has been a four-year move. The Colts did it overnight back in the eighties.
They did.
We got pricing back for the original renovation to be able to move them. Prices were higher than we had anticipated. And I'm sorry. Oh, okay. It's the voting, I guess you're right. I mean, is that what's slowing us down?
It's just the cost.
Ramps and dogs and all, just expensive right now.
So, the cost came back more than I think we anticipated at the time. And so, we were going to look at having staff do some of the work and subcontract some of it out on our own. And then the DSS renovation started. And so, we stopped, we stopped working on that to get DSS because we've had a lot of staff time at work at DSS. We, they've done a lot of that to help along.
So, at this point, timeframe, three months, six months? Three more years?
Probably six months.
Not three more years.
Well, it's six unless you all decide and say, hey, we want to move to the top of the list. And then we can allocate the staff to do it. If that's your request, so.
So, we're guessing at this point, on the current pace, about six months.
About six months. You asked me six months. I'm going to say six more months.
We don't need a vote. It's going to, I would suggest that Lance, continue to monitor.
Okay.
We're going to change the product.
All right. State people, thank you. So, implement a new fleet management system. I think Reese and Charlie and Don and Kevin were keen on this. We're looking at Flideo.
Flideo, you know, Flideo is the product that we chose after reviewing multiple ones. We implemented it on a test group. It was successful with a test group. We have now added all of the vehicles to the system. So, we are getting the information in, and we're rolling it out to each department. So, they will start doing their maintenance in this, in this coming budget. They will start doing all of their maintenance and work through Flideo. We did the complete test cycle of paying the vendors through our finance department. And all of that seems to have been successful. So, we're just ready to expand it out.
Okay, moving on to focus three, public safety. Continue to, you go ahead. Move back there, continue to.
Oh, okay.
Continue to seek a solution for EMS shortage. We did a shift bonus program. It wasn't as effective as what we thought it would be. The people stayed here six months. Then after six months, they found other employment. What is positive, though, is the EMS program, the academy that we had. They graduated in 2022. And Houston and I were at that. There were, I think there were eight that graduated there. It's very successful. They're starting their new one up in March, April, I'm sorry. April 24th. And when we talked, we just went over there for Anthony Crowder's retirement. And they were talking about being, you know, getting back into staffing where they need to be. But they also talked about it being a national issue, as you all know. So, it's, we're, put it this way. We've got six to seven trucks on the road right now. Forsyte, I think, has eight. And they're three times our size. That tells you a lot about the capacity.
Do we know how many private vendors Forsites may have?
I don't, that's a good question.
In the middle of all thrives and willings.
Yeah, I don't know that. I'm sure they probably have several.
Also said that the shift bonus for EMS was not as impactful as we had hoped. Sheriff came to us and said that that would help solve his jail problem. Do we know where that?
They, so that with them, as far as the staffing level, I think we've got eight in the pipeline right now? Is that correct?
Five come on this weekend, and five come on, I believe it's the 28th of February. So, they've got ten new detention officers coming in this month.
So, that will help out. That, that, that's still that hundred dollar bonus. That, that is not a bearing on that, but that just shows that we're getting back where we need to be.
When we said that bonus program that wasn't successful is not the hundred dollar bonus. That was the hiring bonus in trying to get you to stay. Two separate programs.
Okay, encourage participation in volunteer fire departments and rescue squads. We have information on the county's website. We have created a, a fire and rescue video on our take channel. I don't know of any other way we can reach out. If you guys have any ideas, we're certainly open to figure out other opportunities.
Charlie and I did bring it up to our legislators during that Gold's chat that we had a week or so ago.
Well, the prop, the prop is, both fire and EMS is the, the amount of education requirements they need. And Houston heard this earlier, is they need, they want these guys to have a degree. Twenty years ago, they got a certificate, and they performed just as functional back then as they do now. Just the requirements are so extensive that if they get their degree, they're going to want to get a seventy, eighty thousand dollar job.
We've done what we can.
Yes, sir.
The legislators was not only sympathetic, there's a bill in the works, at least as far as EMS is concerned.
Yes.
You're bringing up, just going to back up there. You bring up a good point about the education, even the volunteer fire departments, like my, I want to do it. It takes two years, really, to get that education before you start doing something. But on the flip side of that, I understand that there is some minimal education that can be had where the chiefs can authorize you to work. They seem to be having a problem with that from a liability standpoint. So, maybe we could get with them at the chief's meeting and talk about what, what their concerns are and how we combat that so that we can put people to work earlier. I don't think you're going to ever be able to attract younger people off the street into the fire department if they know there's a year or two-year commitment before they can actually start doing anything. So, if we could, if we could look at that and see what, what, what the problem is there. And then if we need to contact our legislators, say, we need some help on this. Because I did a forty-two hour class when I first got in the fire department. Fire still burns the same way. And I went to work, and we put out fires. So, there, there are, there may be some things that we can interject if we find out what the problems are on the local level with the chiefs putting people to work after a certain number of hours.
Okay, we'll check with.
Well, this is a finer thing, but one of the complaints I've heard is they go through the fire academy, but they're not eighteen years old. And even though they finished all the training, they're not allowed to play fires. I would suggest to you that if you're qualified, you're qualified, no matter what your age is.
I agree.
Okay. Focus area four, citizen engagement, communication, increasing our ways to have citizens access the county. We are pursuing some new methods of engagement. One is employee highlights and department highlights on the take channel. Promoting events, county news stories that are automatically posted on social media. I think that Rebecca does a good job getting the information out on LinkedIn, Facebook, and Twitter. Inform citizens about what we have in the county. And we are doing that through our website and new videos about the county department. But we're doing it at the right timing. So, if it deals with, for instance, something with children, it's at a time of, what, ten to twit sometime. And then later on in nighttime.
She, she has become parts of groups that do research for us and determine the best time to target our markets and send out posts and things like that. So, if it's a family and they have kids and they're working, you don't send it out at nine o'clock when they're at work. And then you try to send it out later. So, we're doing a lot of scheduling. So, instead of someone, she's sitting there and sending out the post at time, it's sent out at peak times that this information will be seen. And we are seeing the direct result of that because these links are, we can see our website traffic increase after these posters are out, so.
And that's the next segue into enhance and promote the county's website. We've seen about a twenty-five percent increase in the usage of, the traffic of the website. Focus area five, county appearance.
I just want to ask a question. Since we've done the thing with the kids on pledge of allegiance, are we getting right many hits on that? Is it being pretty positive?
Yeah, the, actually, we're playing the videos in small, like we break it down. And those, I think the other day, it was like compared to normal, it was up seven hundred percent. So, yeah, it hasn't.
So far, I've got the next meeting, the next two meetings, and then I just got two more. So, I've got enough for the next four meetings. So, they're coming in slowly but steadily.
So, we, I would be interested to continue to promote that, just like you're doing. Thank you.
Those things have desire, or is it?
Sure.
Focus area five, county appearance and environmental enhancement. Continuing education campaign around littering. The pilot program that we were working on had some successes and some failures. I've put a pause on the one that we have right now until we can figure out a different route to go. There's specific reasons behind that. Social media posts, we're working on social media posts to get the word out. And DOT, I don't know if you've seen, but they've put money back in their pocket. So, they're starting to continue to, or starting to get back to picking up litter. Yeah, we've got to figure out a different strategy with our one internally, which can be difficult. Anyway, investigate options to address blighted properties. We got ten thousand dollars for, and we get money. We've applied for money every so often. We get money to tear down some of these mobile homes that are abandoned. We got ten thousand dollars for sickle-bited homes. And we haven't spent that yet because we're trying to find a contractor that will do it for ten thousand dollars, which right now is kind of difficult. We are going to apply for 2023 funds too, for a second grant.
And we're hoping we can piggyback those and make it a more enticing project. Right now, we've had two vendors respond and reply in the ghostus. They're never coming to the work. So, we're hoping with a larger dollar amount, if we can combine two grants, we may get a vendor to come in and spend a few weeks and do the project.
Is some of these blighted properties with that, I would suspect that that would be some that the taxes aren't being paid on too.
Correct.
So, how are we doing? What are we doing in trying to? I know that Todd and his group had started back and went through the support closures. Yeah, how was that done?
They're, he'll be able to explain more. I know that they're hitting the top ones first. So, the ones with the mobile homes on, they're, they're way down here compared to the ones that are over there, eight, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. They're the ones at the top we're starting to hit. And then we'll eventually get down. But we've got quite a bit on the list. I mean, we put a hold on it with COVID, so we're back on it now.
So, one other question. I know when I was talking to him, I think we were seeking outside counsel to help with that. But now that we have Clyde and it was very.
I still.
About how to do that, is that, could that help speed up the case by using him and outside counsel? Or is it something?
Yeah. Let me check with Clyde on that.
I've had some conversations with him about this. And he seems to think that there's a way to streamline that process that maybe he can look up.
I think Matt, maybe Matt, maybe some.
He was, and then it was handed to Eugene.
That's right, Eugene. So, yeah, it's, we're back on.
It was, it was far and about, and it has been for probably eight to ten years now. But just from a workload standpoint, based on the economy, that Matt started stepping away from it. It's something that Eugene was approached with. And I think he's, I don't know how many he's done. I know Matt only has a handful to clean up at this point as far as his, the files that he has.
So, is that something that you could talk with Clyde?
Yeah, I've talked to Clyde, sure.
He thinks he can handle that.
I certainly will. Ways to enforce anti-littering laws. We've got, you've seen the signs that ran. You've got all the signs coming into the counties. You've got some signs that code enforcement puts out. But it's kind of difficult unless law enforcement does observe individual littering. It's just, it's difficult to ping somebody.
You know, this program's been going on for six, eight years. I've yet to see anybody ticket it.
I talk to code enforcement quite often about.
Trash, if, if they find trash for the name. I'm talking about the on-highway litters.
And court law.
Totally second thing. I know it's tough, but in this much time, surely you saw somebody.
I don't know that they throw it out when highway patrol coming upside down. That might be the problem.
They, I've seen it before too. And if you call it in, it's just, he said, she said, the court for him. It's a judge probably throwing out anything. Encourage internships and volunteerism. We're, we're doing that with, and the engineering department's done internships. We did the fellows, DSS, IT also participate in internships. I think, if you guys keep that guy, it's been before today. Never mind, it's, it's hard. We don't have the space yet, we'll find more, thanks. Explore recreational opportunities for, for the rivers. We did the, or, excuse me, Lindsey and EDC did the Blue Way guide promotion material. I think that was really good. It's got all the different rivers on it, access. We maintain and have access for Settle Bridge Road, Woods Lake Park, and Planters Road Park. So, those are the ones that we have. Expand outdoor recreational opportunities. Again, Lindsey's worked with the promotion of the Year of the Trail. The county would continue working with the towns and cities. And you've got your police park and the trail, potential trailer, the governmental center.
Just one thing. There again, I talked with the city manager at Red Bull. We had had some conversation about maybe getting the cities to take up some of the maintenance or something, some of our recreational stuff. And she indicated that Red Bull would be very interested in advancing some of the recreational things that the county may do or they may be willing to handle that maintenance and operation of that if we do something near to that.
We had, yeah, we had our manager's meeting earlier, and we had talked about parks and recreation. I made clear to them, the county's not interested in parks and recreation, getting into the parks and recreation department. We want less government, not more. And I made that clear because John said he heard a rumor that we were going to start a parks and recreation department. I told him, no. I did ask them about the, because I think Kevin, you mentioned, I asked them about contributing for the master plan if we ever do one. They said they'd be willing. I don't know to what magnitude. So, at least those dialogues are open. All five, that was the managers now, it wasn't the, the five of the managers five of the managers said they were interested. Let's see, promote the expansion of broadband and cell service. Obviously, we're looking at having forty-three hundred homes in January twenty twenty-four, I hope. And two cell towers, two new cell towers, one completed, one in construction. We'll probably need ten more, but twenty more.
We're aware of three more that are being investigated in this time.
Promote a high-quality environmental residential environment. We have over a thousand homes that they're currently working on. We had the TRC listed yesterday to, addition to one subdivision, sixty-six homes and another new subdivision of twelve homes. Focus area seven, quality of life, promote educational opportunities. Committee, obviously, this is for you guys, committee development, development programs in the school system. I think Don serves on that with the schools.
I do, and we had, we had not met for quite some time because of the change in leadership in the school system. We were given Mr. Stover the opportunity to kind of get acclimated to the atmosphere that he was in. But I've asked Susan to try to set up a meeting for us, and I think she's actively trying to do that. And I think the school system has had some issues right there with that, but we are actively trying to pursue that again to keep on top of what they're vocational education.
That's good.
So good. Yep, thank you.
RCC expanding continuing education programs at the high school with recent legislative change. They got a grant for six hundred twenty-five thousand that came through Lee's office for workforce development and apprenticeship programs. And then the facilities committee, which Kevin and Charlie serve on, to work with the schools on their capital needs of the school system. And that is a summary of some of the things we're working on in the focus areas. Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Appreciate it. And let's go ahead and move to the next item.
And this, the significant project of base looks like that, so these sheets right here.
You know how much I appreciate that, is that?
Yes, sir.
Before he gets started, the sheets that we've been doing traditionally, that we go out and update, we're in the process of building a web application that you guys will be able to see that is more efficient from the people that are entering the data. So we're wanting to get, we're the guys that are working and thinking that's taking into data that uploads into the system. So we're trying to create efficiencies all the way through the process instead of entering it in seven different spots.
That's right. And something that we could log in and be.
That's correct.
That'd be very helpful.
So this is, this form here is a stopgap until we get to that. So we're not updating seven different.
I appreciate you, so thank you.
Starts off.
Okay, so I think Derek had asked me to talk about the roofing projects, the ones that we have completed to date. Roughly ninety-five thousand, two hundred square feet roofing replacement or either repainting. This includes the Ag Center, the Gov Center, DSS building, VF, our Veterans and Family Services, Stonable Library and Central Services Warehouse. The only one we have to do, to do this year is coating the roof at Board of Elections. I think we're going to be doing that in March, once the weather warms up a little bit to get that roof coated. It's a metal roof. For the future roof projects, the biggest one that is upcoming is the RCJC roof, which is in and of itself a hundred and four thousand square feet. It's on the replacement plan or plan to be either replaced or recoded in twenty of twenty-seven. So it's going to need some planning, I think, on part of the county to pay for that. It's going to be expensive. The others that are out there right now, Readswell Library and Eden Library, they're on our plan showing to be replaced now. Eden EMS base, Readswell EMS base in twenty-five. The Emergency Operations Center in twenty-six. And so that's the information on roofs.
Excuse me, Mr. Tate?
Yes, sir.
You, you mentioned that the Justice Center was going to require some, some action or some looking into, but is that on our capital improvement plan currently?
It is part of our capital improvement plan. The one reason we're emphasizing that's, that's a very large roof, and it also creates complexities in a roof replacement. So it's not routine like the other ones that we're doing. So that is going to need some attention.
But at the same time, I think that highlights why we do the capital improvement plan. When you have these complex things like that, it really shines a light in deep day.
Yeah. And I think I was just trying to make you all aware that.
No, I appreciate it. Appreciate it.
And everybody still considers that building to be new.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and it's, I mean, it's, it's getting to be near fifteen years old.
And just to clarify, did you say it is or it is not currently?
It is.
It is, okay.
Part of our long-range plan.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any questions about roofing or? Okay, the next item, I think Derek wanted me to discuss was the building projects and what we have completed in the last year, year and a half. At Veterans and Family Services, we did a complete renovation of that facility, adding some offices, upgrading that building with new flooring, painting, ceiling, electrical work lights. And then we also added automatic front doors down there. So when you walk up to them, they open automatically, which is nice. And I, I put this in here and it doesn't really, probably doesn't show up in the financial cost of things, but it does have a cost. When we do these upgrades, there's usually quite a bit of moving staff has to do, moving people around, especially over at DSS. They moved staff multiple times over there. And for VFS, they're still, that we had people move for child support and things like that. So with these, just keep in mind that there are things that don't necessarily show up as dollar amounts, but our task would have to be done. For the governmental center, we got partial carpeting done. The new carpeting will be going in here starting in March. We're going to carpet and put LVP flooring down in the entire facility. So that's all getting upgraded. The audiovisual improvements to this room, it's got a new roof, as I mentioned earlier. We replaced the skylights over the lobby and the main lobby and in public health. And another thing we've been doing, as the progressive lights go bad, we've been changing those out to LEDs, upfitting them with LEDs to save on energy and material replacement for the residents. DSS, most of you know what's going on over there, but the second floor was a, pretty much a total renovation, removing all the old cubicles. So it got repainted, new ceiling tile, brand-new LED light fixtures over there, new flooring and new cubicles. First floor repainted, new flooring, LED lights for that, and that building has a new roof as well. At RCJC, not a huge or a whole lot of improvements there. There's HVAC upgrades that you guys approve every year, which is the EMI units that we have to replace out. A lot of them are in Derek's data closets. And we do some touch-up painting over there, time repainting that main second floor area where the court rooms are with all the traffic. Readswell EMS makes some HVAC replacements there. They got a, the parking lot got seal-coated. And the same thing at Emergency Operations Center. HVAC upgrades and parking lot seal codes. So that's a brief overview of building repairs, upgrades, last year, year and a half. Questions?
It's kind of a sidebar, but what percentage of the time is the EMS facility over near McMichael High School used?
Used?
How often is EMS actually there?
Kate, I just texted Kate. She's on his way because he's coming up.
Oh, can I?
Ask him when he gets.
I tell you that the day I rode with them, they were constantly using it all day long. They went between the one McMichael, back to the one over in Madison, back and forth, back and forth.
But the trucks are constantly all the road.
Yeah. Yeah, but if they, they come back to the base, they'll sit down for ten or fifteen minutes, do whatever, and then they'll get back out. So they do utilize it, just probably not like you would think twenty-four hours a day or whatever.
Now, it's a pet peeve. When I first got on the board of commissioners, they, they spent a lot of money on that place, and it's gold-plated and.
What was the hot water heater or something like that?
It's fourteen thousand dollar hot water heater. Anyhow, I'm just curious. You know, if it's being used, fine. I'm just curious.
They do use those bases as storage lockers for, they can only carry so much equipment on the trucks. So they do do constantly, even if they're not stationed at that base, they go by bases.
Well, it's a million and a half dollar warehouses.
Now, it was about a year ago when we approved, I was talking about buildings, we approved about four hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars for the block, the old courthouse. They were going to raise other monies to be able to move ahead. Have you heard any update from those guys?
Ah, so they, there was some asbestos, as we suspected would be, located in the facility. The abatement company started this week, actually on Wednesday, removing that. Once that is out, I think they will then get the estimates for the heating and air replacement costs. My understanding from Dave French, who is overseeing that project for the museum, that they have two building fund lines of credit set up with two local banks to fund the HVAC replacement once they get the estimates back.
So they're, they're, they think they'll be ready to move.
My understanding, yes, sir.
Okay.
The asbestos abatement, is that something that the county had to cover?
No, they paid for it. And it, and honestly, when, I think when we all hear that, we think the number's going to be astronomical, but I think it was only like sixty-five hundred dollars. It was not, you know, one of those numbers. So. If I could, Commissioner or Chairman Richardson brought up Western EMS base. The, the good news with that is, there is nothing in that base that needs replacing or redoing until twenty thirty. So we'll put that out there. That's just paint, so that's.
Permanent storage, there shouldn't be.
Before I move on to the next subject Derek asked me to talk about, I have every building pulled up, or I can pull up any building here. If you have any questions about anyone in, specifically, if you want to ask me those, I'll be glad to pull them up and answer any questions. If you have any, if not, I'll move on to the next.
And I was getting ready to say that Ronnie shared that information with me as we started working on this. And I mean, I work with Ronnie on a daily basis, but it, it gave me comfort to be able to see, he's got a plan. It's out there for years, building by building of, of expenses. So when you say that, yeah, he's ahead of where we are in a five-year.
I, I appreciate that, and I hope the taxpayers will appreciate that, because this kind of look ahead planning saves us in the long run.
I, I, I hope they do too, because you all have funded quite a bit of repair and replacement work to these facilities that had not been done in years past, and I think it's made a huge difference in preserving the life or preserving these buildings and extending the life of them. There's no other questions. I'll move on to water and sewer. I think Lance touched on earlier about the, the water and sewer upgrades that we're planning for the southwestern side of the county. The permits for that, or let me go back, Bill Lester with LKC Engineering, they have completed the design work for that project. It is a fairly massive project, as you can tell by the amount of money. The permits have been issued by the state for that. We got those in about three weeks, which I think surprised all of us. We had no idea we'd get them that fast, but we did. These are force main upgrades to our system. And we're going from what we have in place now, which are mostly twelve and eight-inch force mains, to a whole new system with twenty-inch force mains along the entire route from Red Birch Station, which is the Red Birch Store and Water Tank on two twenty north, all the way to the Madam Treatment Works Facility. It's about seven miles in length, and we are going, trying to increase the capacity to one point two five billion gallons a day. Right now, the goal would be to get to two million gallons per day in the future as needed, depending on development and things out there. So that project, I would suspect, we will go out for bid in the next thirty to sixty days. I mean, Clyde's group are in, are working on securing easements for that project. We would like to have easements in place or close to having in place before we bid it out. But like I said, I think it will go out for bid in the next thirty, sixty days and start mid summer, I would think, with that. So it's a year, maybe fourteen months construction time for that project.
Let me ask you something. You may not know this, maybe for Lance or Derek, but based on that volume and current growth trends, how long is that suspected to satisfy our needs on that side? Does he know?
I'm trying to think of what we have committed with the new development. I, Don, I think I'll have to shoot you that in an email. I cannot remember.
I can tell you, Bill's already got the next stuff, the, the next phase. We started in concept and discussions and. The next phase is started, then there's a bigger phase after that. So he's, he's two steps ahead of the game as far as planning and some of his questions.
The reason I was asking is, is does it, if, if it looks like that's not going to last for a short period of time, would it not make sense to coach at that second step maybe then instead of kind of like marketing this building?
It's a, well, so the next phase is not nearly as major of a step. So it, it'll take a lot more to get the phase to.
Yeah, Derek made a good point. The, the one thing, and sort of what we're going through now with the system, if you ever build it and you don't have use on it.
I had to go to them classes like I did.
Yeah, that, that hurts the system. So, you know, currently, we're, we could send through the, the six-inch force main under the river in Madison, probably about three hundred thousand gallons a day. Actual usage is fifty thousand or less a day right now. We've got committed to that capacity now with the housing developments that have been approved and have applied for capacity from you all. So that capacity on paper, it's taken up right now. We're at the close to three hundred thousand gallon per day limit. So, but again, going through the system right now is less than fifty a day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Following on there, part of that, Lance, is our agreements with the providers. And I believe right now we're at a hundred thousand gallons a day. Has all of that negotiation been done about getting this to three hundred thousand?
Well, the, the negotiations with, like I mentioned earlier with the sewer, Madison's signed off on, Madison's signed off on Mayadan, will sign off on it next week. And then it comes to you guys. I would say probably to you guys at the March, first meeting in March.
Well, that's moving north. I'm talking about the moving south then.
That's moving south. You're talking about the sewer?
No. We sent water south.
Yes.
From Madison, Mayadan. We sent sewage north, Mayadan. All the negotiations for either one.
Yes.
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 It's all about.
And we're also talking with, we'll bring it to you later day, but we're also talking about sewer with Eden as well. But that's something that's ongoing discussion that will come to you guys.
Yeah, the, the sewer agreement with Mayadan that you, you gentlemen will see, that that meeting will be for one point two five million gallons per day. And the, the other thing with that is too, if we, if that number's increased, then that triggers a, a renovation, a fairly significant renovation to the treatment facility in Mayadan. There's an eighty percent rule DQ has, and so that one twenty-five MGD keeps us under that eighty percent rule.
What, what am I missing here? Three hundred thousand gallons going south, one point two million gallons going north. That can't be so.
No, it's three hundred thousand going north, and we have the capacity to send, to go to the treatment facility in Mass.
To the treatment, so?
Yes.
Going north?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the, the bottleneck with that is the six-inch force main under the river in Mass. That's all we can send through.
And you're going, you're going to fix that?
Yes, this new upgrade will correct.
They do a bypass, Madison.
Yeah, we're going to bypass Madison, because Madison's just a bypass in Mayadan.
They got that.
Yeah.
The number, I'm, I'm missing something on the number. If you're sending one point two million gallons to the wastewater treatment plant, we need a million point two gallons going south.
Water.
To the water.
Yeah, the water's a problem.
Yeah, water right now is okay. We don't have, we have water capacity.
You anticipate you've made negotiations for one point two million gallons going south?
Yes.
Good. Yeah. Got you. Okay. Any other questions about that before I confuse you more? Sorry.
Well, I apologize. I just started listening to these numbers and they didn't.
Yeah. Couple other things with water and sewer. Fish and Creek Lift Station is getting an upgrade by an AI, a grant, which will be moving it out of the floodplain, and it'll be basi- And, uh, it'll be basically a complete new lift station. Uh, that is one that, uh, uh, pumps sewer to the city of Eden right before, um, crossing the river over at Meadham Bridge. Hogan's Creek Booster Pump Station upgrades by an A I grant. Uh, that, uh, water booster pump station will get relocated out of the floodplain, uh, paid for by a grant. Um, and the only other thing, uh, Bill is looking at a secondary water supply line, uh, down Lindsey Bridge Road, uh, to add to the water capacity, uh, in that area if needed in the future. And that is everything I have for water and sewer. Any questions?
I apologize for asking, but that's the number one question I get from citizens in the area as fast as they will do with their services.
I think right now, well, once the sewer upgrades get completed, the county will be positioned very well for all of that. Um, sewer is the one thing right now, we, when we have developments come to us in T R C, they get approved, uh, but conditionally because we don't have sewer capacity to give out to them. Now, once we start, D Q has indicated that they will allow us to start deli, or allocating some of that capacity to these new subdivisions because of our construction pipeline being ahead of the subdivision timelines. So you guys will see a few more of these coming in the near future, once that construction starts for approval.
I think that answers Commissioner Powell's concern.
Yes.
Couple of years ago, we started trying to chip away at a huge deficit. And it was with the water fund. And now this year, in the budget, we cut it from basically a full penny, so almost seven hundred thousand, to I think now it's two hundred and some thousand for this year's budget. I'm seeing e- even more, uh, of, of gain in that area, so we'll get closer to the black.
We got a, we got a proposal that we're gonna make to you guys shortly in the Enterprise on Water and Sewer that in my opinion would be very favorable for the county. And we can get, having to watch those, or be in those classes for a whole day, but we'll get there.
And, um, a couple of years ago, I was gonna mention, and I followed up a few times, I'm doing a promissory note, uh, so that, or, or some record keeping of the deficit that we were running into, so that we could pay ourselves back once we get into the black.
When I turn it over to Pat, you'll address that with Enterprise on Water. Just, uh, yeah, right at the top.
Okay.
Both of those things we hit on.
And we're at, um, and it may not sound like a large number, but it is, it's pretty significant. We're at over seven hundred water customers right now, which is a pretty large increase from where we were a couple of years ago when you brought this to our attention. So that number is tracking steadily upwards, uh, and hopefully putting us in a position to be break even or putting money back in. Uh, the last item, I think Derek wanted me to. Okay, last item was the firing range, uh, indoor firing range. And so, um, we have the ninety-five percent completion design back from the engineering company, Architect Farm. Uh, we should be getting the final designs. I'd expect them about any time, uh, to get ready to, uh, release that for bids if the board would like to do that.
No, we're putting it on hold until we find a third-party operator. I don't wanna put any dime on ground until we find somebody to operate. Put it out twice for R F P. We had one response back, but it was not what we anticipated. So we're trying to find somebody. So I wouldn't recommend moving forward at all until you find a operator, a effective operator, one of those, what to do with.
Well, the other thing, in my opinion, that operator, wherever they should be, needs to look at our drawings, be sure everything is coordinated, and then we can look forward with a coordinated effort.
And we're, we're trying every angle. I got on Facebook, we tried to find the International Shooting Association, so we put email, I mean, stuff on that. So if you guys have any, any avenues for us to look at, I know we looked at the, uh, Gun Club and they weren't very favorable of, of doing anything with it. So if you know of anybody, anything, any avenue, let us know. So, Don, your connection with the hunting stuff, you may know some.
I was getting ready to ask you, are we making the, the, the requirements too stringent? Cause I wouldn't think that we need an international group to come in and operate a local.
No, I mean, that's only, that, what I'm saying is that's the only site I could find on Facebook and had some sort of component of shooting ranges. So if there's a North Carolina, I don't know where to look, I don't know where to advertise these R F Ps.
Yeah, we've tried every place we can sort of think of to, you know, to send the R F Qs to. And the R F Q's pretty generic, it's, it's not, I don't think it's stringent on any stretch of the imagination. So I think if somebody's looking for a facility to operate, it, you know, it, it'll, it'll make.
We don't know what platform to put it on, to capture somebody's eyes, okay, I'd like to do that, or I'd like to, my name would have to do that, I just.
We, we had.
Try the N R A?
We, uh, we had the guys, uh, that are doing the design work. They were at the, the shot show in Vegas, uh, a couple of weeks ago. They were talking to folks there about it for us, you know, trying to promote it for us.
Looks like to me it'd be a good opportunity.
You will probably get somebody in the county, but we have a lot of people here who are very experienced in shooting and that kind of thing, and it'd be a good opportunity to deal with business endeavor.
We've tried to track down the guy that was going to put one, if you remember several years back, he was gonna try to build one in Danville. He had it all, uh, or designed and it was, was tied beside two schools, so Danville turned it down. Trying to track him down on LinkedIn and Facebook and haven't heard anything back, so.
Yeah.
Don't know.
Yeah, if you have any suggestions, please just let me know and I'll try to reach out to them.
About the guy over there on fourteen, that trains dogs.
Thank you?
Yep.
I don't know whether, I mean, I think he's, I thought.
I, I was just thinking about.
Pretty full.
He knows people.
Yeah, he, yeah.
I don't think he'd be interested in doing it, so.
Yeah, that may be an opportunity. Anyway, we'll let you know that's on hold until we find somebody.
That's, that's all I have, Derek had asked.
Right, thanks.
You got it. I'll move along with the I T ones. Um, thank you, Rob.
Yeah.
Um, the first one is a clean project was our home system upgrade. Um, the reason we brought that up, it was pretty extensive product and it affected all of our departments here. Uh, we've rolled that out. We've actually got to the point where we're doing what we consider our third level as departments are coming to us trying to create efficiencies for the phone system. Our goal is to stop giving out individual numbers and to call central numbers so we can get to the desired person, because turnover's so high. You give out somebody's number, they're gone or they moved to a different department. So it seems to be working very well and we can also track who's to call in departments, seeing if they're calling back, to see if they're leaving voicemails, so it's been moved. We've got a lot of data and been able to handle a lot of our situations where we didn't have that information before. And as we said, during these moves, it makes everything seamless, cause they're plug and play. The phones just move with the people, there is no reprogramming, there's no redoing. We're getting ready to move the people from Tyree Dotson, it's just pick their phone up, hook it to their desk and we keep on rolling. So it creates a ton of efficiencies going with modern phone system. Uh, the connected broadband, um, you guys heard the update from Spectrum. Do you guys have any more questions related to that, where we are at this time? Um, finance and H R, this was one you guys approved for us last year. Um, we are finally starting to get a little bit of traction with that. Unfortunately, due to staffing issues and burdens on departments, it's, it's hard to take people from finance and H R. Uh, with the audits that they have going on and with the limited staff that Stephanie had most of the year, we just couldn't get the attention that we needed. We, uh, have several demos set up and product development meetings with potential companies this month and next. So hopefully we will gain some traction on that to move forward. Again, the major concern with that is just staff's ability to be able to focus on the project. Uh, our finance and H R staff are at max capacity doing their daily jobs. Uh, so that's gonna be a concern as we go through this project. And part of that, we are potentially looking at a vendor to help us with. Uh, mobile units, that's something you guys started the project four years ago with the Sheriff's Department. We've actually made it full cycle through the Sheriff's Department and we're actually starting to replace their devices. Uh, so it, it's something that, um, you're seeing for us to go full cycle. Uh, we've also rolled that out to, um, planning inspections and environmental health and also all of the E M S units, so it's fully live also.
So the inspections, their computers are completed, cause we did that last year, right?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
And we're doing an upgrade on Monday, uh, that will allow them full functionality on iPads or computers.
Thank you.
Uh, they, they can do both functions from either device as of, on Monday night, when we do that upgrade.
So I'd like to say, we did, sorry, Ken.
No, you're fine.
Um, I'd just like to, to tell you, your staff and inspection, I appreciate that. That, that has been a huge benefit for the citizens, being able to sit at your desk at midnight and schedule, you know, inspections for your jobs. And then when they're inspected, you get a notification immediately on your email that lets you know it passed or failed or what's wrong. And you can schedule people to take care of those items if you need to. So, um, you know, I know we talked about getting it going for a long time. Um, and then all of a sudden we really started putting effort and I think you and your team for doing that has been well received.
And we're hoping these, these next rounds, my grades Monday, even, we think it'll be more positive effects for the customer. Our, our goal is to stop that phone ringing and let everybody do everything online, pay online and call. And we're getting very close to that.
Good.
Uh, the final.
On, on that topic, so we just make sure we, we review processes. Once everything's implemented, uh, I've had a few contractors tell me, working through the Kings, that there are times that they may log in and put in that request. And then they'll put in another request, the second one gets serviced before the first one, because just from a procedural standpoint, there's a breakdown of getting from point A to point B and as far as those requests. And just, just review those procedures and make sure that once they log, once they're in the office, they're getting where they need to go and.
Yeah, yes, that is not a problem and we are one hundred percent agreement with you. One of our problems in our inspections is we're limited on staff right now and we might not have inspectors to do the one that was put in first. And this inspector, which has less training, can do that inspection. So we are getting a lot of complaints of that, that they know, this guy called in and said, I need this inspection. And we went out and did it. This guy said, well, I called three days ago, we don't have but one inspector that can do those type of inspections. So yes, it is a problem on both sides.
Yes, yes.
If we agree.
Okay.
Um, document management, this was a big push, uh, last year. We have successfully rolled out our new document management system in Tax Department and they're fully live on it. We have just received the quotes for doing part of D S S, uh, in their legal department for all of their legal documents. And we are expecting a quote next week for taking all of the old files in public health, so we can make those electronic, cause there are rooms full of those. So we are starting that process. Um, as we do D S S, we're gonna see where else we can go in D S S to roll those files into it. So we have a product in place and we're starting to roll that out.
So, software, Susan, has women enrolled in a lot of those?
Uh, that is a possible, we're, we're, we're asking for a demo for Susan. It is, Laserfish is the product and it has a document management workflow that we're looking for this season.
Time frame.
Um, I would say with the capacity we have on now, probably three to four months.
Thank you.
Okay.
Even though we were starting with.
Two.
You will start operating replacements in the E M S.
So the radio replacements, um, this was in the, this was year twenty-three budget, the money was set aside. Um, all of the radios were ordered through Motorola in September, all the P O's are dated early September. Our radio project is exclusive to emergency services. We ordered four nine-one-one, emergency management, E M S, the rescue squads and the fire marshal's office. The Sheriff's Department did their own project through the same vendor, but they had their own project going with that. Um, when we placed the order, they told us then it would be a lengthy, uh, delivery date. They said some, they tell people a minimum of six months and they said they have not seen any come in in six months as of yet. I received an email from Ron Wells last night, it was our vendor that updated our, our orders. Um, a lot of the radios have shipped, but they ship just the radio, just the charger, just the microphone, nothing. They don't come as a complete pack in a box. So a lot of book here showing here, radios are shipped, no accessories, no mics, uh, no extra batteries and all of things which we ordered. So they're housing some of this at their warehouse until they get the entire stuff ready for us to, to have here and then program will bring us an entire, uh, inclusive project. So that's, he puts on here, his ship dates are anywhere from, he's got different dates listed, but they're anywhere from April through September of twenty twenty-three. So it is an ongoing project, the funds are encumbered for all the emergency services equipment, but we have not received any of it as of yet.
Yes, sir.
All right, just a question, I know that this was sort of initiated by the state, having to do these upgrades. Are we going, do you expect you'll have what you need before that, um, timeframe?
Yes, um, and we've talked to our vendor about that. The cutoff date is Sept, is, uh, June first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
That's why we wanted to get the order placed early, cause we knew there were gonna be delays and hopefully this has been placed early enough to guard against those delays.
Thank you. This, this provides me with a situation, I had a Jordanian friend, the Jordan bought airplanes from the French government in Tenerife, if you know what that is. And when they arrived in crates, everything was there but the wheels. And the French government said, oh, he wanted wheels. So the radios are no good unless you have all the bits and pieces, is that not true?
That's correct.
We don't care about the rest of it.
I do have an update from the Sheriff's Department, their P O was created at the same time and they're also seeing same with the ship days.
What, what kind of timeframe, you know, radios we could for? What are we looking at as far as replacements?
That's hard to say, and the reason I say that, the current ones we have now, which are the Motorola X T L, X T S series, they've been here for fifteen, seventeen years. They're still good radios, they work fine. They're changing the, the component and the antennas, the infrastructure side of this work they're changing. So to give you a date, I couldn't, because if they change the infrastructure again, it could change what radios are, are useful on the, on the infrastructure.
I understand some counties put up their own towers.
They do.
And they're not effective when the state makes those changes, is that right?
That's correct.
Um, how many towers would it take in Rockingham County to, or, or could you use the towers that are already up?
We could potentially use, uh, I'd like to say we could use, we own four towers right now, um, but they do have the Viper stuff on. What you have to factor in is if you own your own stuff, and that is a good platform, but it's massively expensive platform. The building of the towers, or even if we could use our own antennas, repeaters, microwaves, maintenance, it's a massively expensive project. That's kind of the bonus we get and I'm not here to sell the Viper system, but that's the bonus we get with the Viper system. We don't pay for that radio system, the state maintains it and we don't incur any of those expenses. We are at the liberty of the state when they do these upgrades to get off of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of our radios, but you would have way more than that invested if you owned your own radio system.
What would you have way more than that when you consider E M S, Sheriff's Department and the fire departments? I know there's a big burden on the fire departments this year, um, to have to come up with money to buy their radios. So, so if you put all of those three together countywide, then, then what are you looking at this?
I still think you'd come out better, because we're looking at this expense one time and if, if, if they're good for ten years, if we spend a million dollars once every ten years as opposed to two or three hundred thousand over that time period, uh, two or three hundred thousand a year over that time period maintaining a series of towers and infrastructure that goes with the radio system, I still think you'd come out better on this three system.
Good. Could we at least explore, I mean, we're, we're certainly committed for where we're at at this point, but at some point in the future, there's gonna be another change, whether it's ten years, twenty years, fifteen, whatever it is. Could we at least explore, um, what other counties are doing, what the cost is, how it relates, uh, the annual upkeep? Because as we talk about, as Charlie pointed out, the capital plan, uh, this needs to be something in the capital plan, maybe twenty years down the road, fifteen years. And we can evaluate where the county may need to, to be fifteen years from now.
We can do that.
Uh, and then that would give us some information and maybe be able to collaborate with those fire departments, with the E M S or with rescue squads and, um, or with rescue squads and figure out what the game plan is for the next round.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would point out to you, the county owns a number of water towers, which are totally serviceable as building, purpose-built communication tower.
Right.
And they're pretty well spread out around here.
Yeah, so we might have enough call structures, but I mean, I don't know what the cost in the past has been. And there's no doubt about the cost in the future, either way.
Well, I don't know. I happen to own a water tower and they are replacing the antennas. We rent, we lease it. And the cost of the replacement antennas is over $2 million. Now, they're providing telephone services to 100,000 people. I don't know a bunch of phones. So it may not be comparing apples to apples at this. I have an unrelated, I guess, question for you, but this had come up not too long ago. I've happened to be following Chase Sheriff's Department initiated from Alamo Flat Rock Road, Gilbert County and Forsyth County. And I keep hearing our dispatchers saying, we've got Gilbert on the line, we've got Forsyth County. Do we have communications, radio communications with them, or do we still have to pick up a phone call and try to let them know where our deputies are?
We can patch that together. Typically, we just call them and update them. That way they go through the candidates, pick up a phone and call. It's quicker to do it that way. We do have the ability to patch them together, but that's used. So EMS staffing, we are still hurting as everybody in the country is. We are allotted overall 62 field positions. This is non-administrative people at all field positions, 62, 50 paramedics, eight EMT basics and four EMT advanced. Prior to the academy that we just had, we had 17 vacancies. And we were employed at that time, 29 paramedics, three EMT advanced and 13 EMT basics. The academy yielded eight people, one of which we willfully resigned during the training. So that cuts down to seven. We hired a new EMT basic, but then we had another one resign, took or wished to go to part-time due to a childcare issue, which brought us back even at 29 medics, three EMT advanced and 20 basics. So that leaves us currently 10 positions short. We have already started accepting applications for the next academy. The next academy is slated to begin April the 24th. They just sent an updated schedule after today. It'll graduate June the 23rd. Currently, there's nine applications. I didn't check the system. There may be one added in there now, but I actually have nine physical applications laying on my desk. So these, we do have three other members that are forecast to retire this year. Two of those are medics, seasoned medics, one of which is a seasoned basic EMT. The current trends are continuing. The last people we lost, we lost to the ER setting. They, one went to ANEPPN. One, we heard went to drawbridge. I don't have not seen that materialize. I've seen our former person at ANEPPN ER. One member went to an EMS service that was closer to their county resident, so they didn't have a drive. So the trend continues. We're still in a crisis, to be perfectly honest. When you look at, we typically have 50 or we're allotted 50 paramedics and we're down to 29. That's, that's where we're hurting. And that's where we knew all along we were hurting. And these academies are great, but we have to stay on top of these academies and run phase two and phase three to get people educated to the advanced level and the paramedic level to try to boost our paramedic allocation back up to continue to the highest level of care that we can. And that's what we're battling right now.
So you've been to the commissioners several times with proposed solutions, and I know this is proposed. I believe every time that you've come, we've approved.
That's correct.
What you've brought to us. So what do you think now is the solution to this, or is there one?
I don't have an overall solution, to be perfectly honest with you. In the interim, and we've done this all along, the $100 ship bonus has been good. We're working our people to that, to be perfectly honest with you. But that $100 is still motivating people to come in and pick these extra ships up. And it's happens every week. And we spent a lot of money doing it. And you're right, the whole administration has approved that and we appreciate it. But that has been a lifesaver at this point. I think that's scheduled in this quarter.
So maybe come back to you and ask me for an extension.
So the, last year we did a payroll raise and we did a revamp of that. How was that?
That's worked well, but as we knew would happen, it becomes a bidding system. Gilbert's gone upon theirs, which made Alamance go upon theirs. So these counties sit back and wait and see who's elevating their pay and then what is the next step? How do you one up the next person?
Excuse me.
We're seeing that happen. And I think you'll continue to see that happen. But so that's why I can't tell you a definite, what is a definite answer to this.
Well, I knew you couldn't, but the reason I asked that was because it's important for the public to know.
Right.
That administration here, the commissioners and your office have done everything that we reasonably can to try to attract and retain these people. But due to the external pressures on the labor market, other counties are, just as you said, bidding against us every time we raise that price.
It is. I will say this, the measures that were taken, and I will say this to be politically correct, the measures that were taken were good. It showed to our people there was a vested interest in our people and a vested interest in what they needed. So that was a very positive step. But there again, I think it's something we have to stay on top of because these other counties are, they're watching, they're saying what. And we can't compete with the private sector. I thought I called all week. We can't compete with the private sector, but we can compete with labor counties at which we've made every effort to do. And I think it's important that we stay on top of that, continue to compete as best we can to retain the people that we have and that we can.
Casey, isn't it correct that I told you before you got here that the requirements have been so strenuous that it's caused a lot of people? If they happen to be at the level that you're talking about, they could easily go another route and make a lot more money with the time they spend to get the credential to become a paramedic, whereas 10 years ago, it didn't require almost half the time to become a paramedic.
That's correct. And then them opening up paramedic credentials to be legally able to go into the ER, work in the ER. That's when you begin to compete with the private sector. And that's, I mean, there's no county that's going to compete with the private sector, especially a medical private sector.
And Rodney, is it fair to say, I mean, obviously, I think we've shown, staff's shown, and we're committed to trying to solve this issue. As part of this time, you know, with what we're doing with the academy, it looks like we're going to get better, but some of this is just going to take a little time.
And I agree totally. It's going to take time to cycle these people through. We had very good exposure with the first academy. I think we had good exposure with the next one. The advanced academy is slated to begin in April. So we have, you know, again, stayed on top of this thing. We're staying on top of pushing them to the next academy to get them advanced. And you're right, it will work itself out. But it's not an easy or quick business.
I almost think of it like our capital improvement one. Like it's not, it's not something we can get right to right in a second. But if we keep making the right steps in the right direction, eventually we will get back to where we need to be.
And the beauty of that is we are, we're forming our own at that point from the ground up, which gets them entitled to our customs, our traditions, our foundations, which is a good platform overall, once we reach that point.
Let me ask you another question real quick. There's a, I'm probably going to get some of this wrong, but through Health and Human Services, there's a group there or there's a program there that they will go out and visit, repeat callers to your agency. I hope you, but basically have used the system. Are your people or your office turning those in on a regular basis? Because I know I have one that lives below me. I see an EMS unit there three or four times a week, and that's, that's taking away from somebody else that might truly need that service.
We do make constant referrals and integrated health, so it takes care of that.
That's right.
They do a good job of reaching out through those people. They have curbed some of that call wire. Some of that population, that's the lifestyle they choose. They all have a different lifestyle. So they, no matter if it's integrated health or who's going there, they're going to continue that type of lifestyle. So it's a very difficult population to change their socialization, but we do make those referrals. They reach out to us. And if they have the choice to not take the help that integrated help gives them, which puts us right back, you know, running those multiple calls. But there are some people they may seem in fact with.
Well, I think Rodney, there's some indication that legislature is going to help us out with the credential issue. A separate question though, how big a problem is the childcare issue amongst the EMS?
Childcare maybe?
Well, I'll give you an example. Purina's looking at having an integrated childcare facility. Because as they try to hire folks, the lack of childcare is, keeps them from getting everybody that they want. So they're considering having an onsite childcare. So I'm asking you, you mentioned at least one EMS guy changed the shift because of childcare. So I'm asking that overall, how big an issue is?
I don't see that being a big issue. This person has a newborn, and that's why they decided to go in part-time to take care of their newborn. If you looked at it really from our perspective, we're looking at it, we would work 12 hours shifts, so we're taking shifts. So if we had a service like that, it would always have to be 24/7 to facilitate your nighttime crews as well. So I don't, I don't see that we have that problem. I'm sure we have some employees that battle childcare issues, but to the impact that we need to step in and facilitate some type of county childcare, I don't see that as a, obviously, I've been a great need within our service at this point.
The last thing that I would like to say to you is thank you for what you do. Please pass that along to your people because I had the opportunity to work with them, look yourself right in front of the office. And it was very comforting to see them come in and calm the situation down, take charge and administer aid. These people, the minister, very professional man. We'd be very proud of our county and our EMS. So we do want to do everything we can to have this problem, this commissioner fairness, and I'll come to conclusions. I just think it's going to take some time and a change in the current labor market before we be successful in getting you fully.
I agree. Thank you. Please, thank you.
Todd, did you borrow that tie?
No.
Why is it?
With that hat?
Todd just never seen you wear one.
All right.
And it was professional with that.
Well. It looks really good.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I'm going to go over, what I'm going to do is I've, I've sent all of y'all this information for y'all, so y'all can have a look. If any of y'all have any questions, feel free to get with me after, you know, later or wherever. But I'm going to try to just bullet point a couple of things that I feel that is, is, it's been a good thing. And I'm going to talk about one thing that we had discussed previously in several other meetings, is the equalization that's going to happen this year. First of all, I want to go over our building permits. The 2022 totals for all main structures were up 18% from 2021. The just kick build tones was up 31%. And then there were 450 main structures or major outfits for all non, for all types of non-exempt permits. Residential construction, we had 300 single-family homes this year, which was second highest since '04. 24 modular homes, townhomes and duplexes, 54 double wides, 64 single wides. Commercial, we had five commercial. We had three industrial, deeds and plats. They were a little down this year, 44, 54 compared to 45, 75, which is still a big increase from several years back. The sales ratio, our low in 2021 was 78, 77.86. And then the high was one in 2016 was 105.2%. Our current sales ratio based on the sales filed through December is around 65, 70% ratio. The sales file data, our average sales price 2021 on newly constructed homes, 308, 585. Average sales price 2022 through September of last year, 323, 922. And of course, our assessment value was 2021, and 2021 it was 249, 513. And this year, the value is 213, 51 through September of '22. And that's because of how our rates are based off of 2019. As we know, and we have discussed in previous meetings when Mark was here, our reappraisal will be, we will become equalized this year on our public utilities. So the ratio that I'm estimate right now is going to be like off to 69%. So what that means, as far as that's concerned, is that if we had $990 million of public utility this year, so with a 68% sales ratio, this would reduce the current public service value by $317 million of value and 2.2 million in tax revenue this year. But the good thing about it is where we discussed and planned it, we'll only lose it for this year. And we won't lose it, you know, after this year. So with the revaluation coming in next year, that'll help, you know, that'll help us. So it was good that we went ahead and planned this.
It's a lot more than we had anticipated earlier, right? We probably were looking at 600,000 a year, but it's quite a bit more.
Yep.
Wow.
Business personal property, we've had several, you know, as always, you can have large swings when you have companies closed, companies open. So we're expecting it to hold its own and remain stable. Major industrial changes, there's Purina, then the new building near Omtex. Then we have Farming Foods coming up here, which will be, you know, not for this year, but for next year. And that will help us there. I'm expecting a 50 to 80 million dollar growth on Purina for this year. And it's not finished yet. They're still, they've got phase one in June, 2023, phase two two months later, phase three 30 days later. I said totally operational by the first of next year. So that's, that'll be some money we'll have from that. Registered motor vehicles, they have, they did increase from the previous year. We're not expecting, we're expecting for 2023, we're expecting that it could decrease to a little to at least 10%, you know, because of the inflation, the way things are now, vehicles sell a little higher. But for 2023, 24, we expect it to could level off and decrease from the previous year. Collections, our percentage last year, which was unpublished, was 98.51. 2021, it's 98.43. As of January 20, as of January 31 of this year, it was 93.52. Last year was 93.57. So we're running very, very consistent with that. And then just a quick summary, I'm indicating raw numbers indicate an 80 to million dollar new construction and property growth. We're still picking up new construction now. Business personal property remains stable. Public utility values will not be certified until September of 2023. And that's going to decrease the revenue because of the equalization. Registered motor vehicles, we feel will remain stable. And collection percentages remain consistent. You know, that was fast, but I just tried to do a quick, you know, a quick run through, run through for y'all. And I have the attachments here with all the information if y'all have any questions here.
Questions?
How much longer Mark will assist me?
As long as I can hope. He, I know he's going to help me at least three years.
Well, when I talked to him, he said he would stay in your business. So I guess that's a good sign.
Yes, it's been a major asset with a new, new crew up and all. And I appreciate y'all going to let me do that. Because that's an asset to have. Losing Mark and Diane, and also I've got Mark and Diane and Henry back now helping me with the new staff. So it's really made the transition easy, I feel, though. Staff we got now is going to be really good for the future.
When I talked to some of the new folks as well, and some of the semi-new folks, and they all said, well, I always ask them the same question. I like being here. And they always have something positive to say. So I think that speaks well to what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you. That's my goal is to. That's my goal is to serve the public and retain my employees.
There were coming on the four floors or something.
March 20th sale.
March, I'm sorry.
March the 20th, we got a sale on four. And actually, I have a thing here that Martha threw up a while back. But what we want to do is go visit Orange County and to see how their process and planning goes. And then I want to meet with Mr. Albright, you know, here on it. And then we're steadily, what we're wanting to do is keep it flowed where we can have a sale each month. We've got four in March. My goal is to have somewhere we can do in April, and something in May, and keep them going. It's always good to go with the big down to the bottom. Sometimes the ones they have had and the stuff, as you know, because of COVID, was, uh, it, they were really hard, very, very hard, difficult. So what we want to try to do now is feed in some that we know we think could move a lot faster, gain accounting money back, you know, plus get it back on the books and everything with that.
We had talked earlier, suggest strongly that you talk to Mr. Albright. He seems to have a real good handle on how to streamline this process and make it move faster.
I will. I will. I'll get in touch with him. Now I'm busy. Season's over now, you know, we got through the first of the year and now listing's going. And I should hopefully have some time there with you soon. And I'll try to get in touch with him, see what I can make of him on the schedule. Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, thank y'all. Thank y'all.
Good luck tonight.
Thank you. I'm doing a night to share tonight with Austin, you know, MT by the way. That's fine. One reason I'm impressed, okay? Y'all too. See y'all.
All right. I will try to save y'all some time. I'm going to kind of go through it quickly because I do want to spend a little more time on the water to inter-pros concerned. So I think that's where we probably have some conversation and planning. Just your normal forecast that I do every year, it's the long sheets of paper. So it's historically done, basically, take the adopted budget from the last year, or the previous year, the adopted budget from last year or this year, and then try to forecast what the next year would be. The last few years have been unpredictable, so the forecast really isn't anything set in stone. We don't have departmental press yet, we're still analyzing revenues. So these are just best guess and just some things that we bake in, just that we, we feel like is going to happen. So what's baked into here for next year is anticipating, um, you know, possibly a 4% COLA, possibly the 3% average merit over half a year's time. So that's one half percent. So for salaries and benefits to go at 5.5% just on potential COLAs and merits that may be recommended. And those will be decisions we'll make through the budget process. CPI in December was 7%, so there's a 7% increase on operating expenses. Just expecting this to normally go up. Some other odd, just one-offs on expenses. Uh, we do know the North Carolina ledger's retirement rate is going up, is going up 0.75% for general government employees and 1% for local government employees. So I've added 270,000 into the budget forecast for that increase. We're keeping the 200,000 for tax evaluation, revaluation reserve fund. Keep building that for the next valuation. Still have the water sewer subsidy of 459,520 for the debt service, but we're going to talk some more on that. Some things we might could do there. We've built in a little bit of money to do a salary study, um, really for position, I think is what we're talking about. More position descriptions and are they classified correctly? I think it's really what we're looking at.
The study that we went through before, we learned it was a very high level and it was basically based on job title compared to other counties. And what this next study will do is look under the hood and look, is that truly what these employees do? Are they titled correct and how does that match against the person?
So I've added a little money for the study and then a little money to compensate, to adjust the compensation based on that study kind of bag. Debt service, we still have the five and a half, five and a half sevens dedicated to CIP. Whatever is not needed for existing debt service will go to CIP. So that's a combination. Capital outlay, leaving that normal, what we normally budget. School expenses, capital outlay and current expenses, leaving those flat as they, as we have in past few years. The Article 46 sales tax, we have issued that debt RCC now, so part of that will go for the debt. The leftover amount will go to RCC, which is projected to be about $1,073,000. That would go to RCC to continue other programs or things that they need to do. Add the lawn taxes, I've baked in sort of Todd's projections on equalization and growth that he's projecting. Those are all baked in. Sales taxes, we are seeing them drop down. They're still high from what we normally see pre-pandemic, but they are not near as high as they were. So to be ultra-conservative, I have only grown those what our normal pre-pandemic percent is, 3.5%. If it's higher than that, that helps. If it, you know, if I project higher and it comes in low, then we're scrambling. So I'll stay ultra-conservative on that, which is what has built up the fund balance over the last few years, not been able to predict what sales, purchasing behaviors are going to be during a pandemic and how does that address sales tax?
But why, why do you struggle when the sales tax is down? You don't change your expenditures just because of good value.
Well, we'd like to do that as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I'm just caught up on the word struggle. You're still covering everything. You just don't have as much margin, right?
Right. Yes. Yeah. If I, if I budgeted, if I had budgeted this year at the 25% that we had last year and we're coming in at 6, 7, 8, 10% now, we would be coming up short. So I try to make sure we're staying very conservative until things normalize. And I don't know what normal is yet anymore. It's, it's hard to predict for me, so I'm fair with normal.
It's just the word struggle, you know?
Yeah.
We don't like you to struggle.
You know? I, I, I keep asking people where that crystal ball is. I, I haven't found it yet. I keep looking for it. Investment earns, um, it's turning out very well for us now. It's shared with Lance over this week. We did, uh, the January, um, distribution of interest earnings. So January 2022, our interest earnings for that month was a little over $10,000. January 2023, our interest earnings for that month was lower $300,000. The increase in interest rates and investing in the auto funds, the excess, um, fund balance, the increase in fund balance we have over these last few years of adding revenues and not spending them yet. The grant money that's come in that has yet to be applied to projects, spent on projects has given me the ability to invest these funds out and higher interest rates. So we're really seeing that return on investment. So for next year, um, I've baked in a $1.3 million investment earnings revenue for next year. Which is, if I go back in history, pre-2008 recession, that's, that's kind of where the county was in the interest earnings. And we've not been able to achieve that with the ultra-low interest rates and the struggling of having auto funds set aside. So that's, that's been very helpful. So all the details here, all the verbiage of what I think answers this is here for your closer reading. And later, if you have any questions, let me know. With all that baked in, um, the tax rate projected would, would need to be about a little over half a penny more than it is now. And it's really dropping the increase in salary costs that were occurring, but also that equalization. I did project the 69% sales ratio in here, so that 2.2 million that Tom is talking about is showing that reduction in here in the add-on warrant tax revenues. So considering that, I don't think that's too far off. Once we get on the market request, we have a few more months of revenues to really project better. It'll probably all come out fine in the end.
Every year, we always predict a higher percentage rate than what we have. We typically bring in with no tax increase, so that's what our intentions are this year.
And we have, you know, fund balance available to help bridge this year with the loss in the public utility revenue. So that, that will be.
With that and the salaries, they'll get us through till next year.
A lot of vacancies, you know, has also helped increase the, the fund balance right now, so. But we don't want to back off of where we're at on projections because we can keep hoping we'll get full vacancy and those months will be missed.
I know, in speaking with the other commissioners, I know in the past, there had been salary studies and there's been nothing but winged service from commissioners and, and no real action, no real thought, no real, um, following through with anything. But I believe we're committed to making sure that employees are taken care of and that the salaries don't end up in a situation where there's repression so that we continue on an annual basis to, um, keep our employees where they ought to be. And in doing that, certainly in short term, uh, there may be some, some requests of departments to hold off on, uh, some of their one-time purchases. Just to make sure that we can invest in the employees. I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn with anybody here, but I think based on the conversations that we've had. So Lance and Derek, I think that is a commitment from this board. And in speaking with the partner heads, when they come with the one-time request, just please remind them that we want to invest in the employees. And I think they'll be very supportive of that, but, um, I know sometimes they, they wait on that one-time request to get some things that they want. Maybe they need them, maybe we need to buy them and, and buy some of those things. But we want the employees to come work.
And that's the discussion we'll have when we have the kickoff meeting with the departments is that employees are priority. You know, you have all the, unless it's a necessary need to have them operate, I think we can bear that in a nice little package to them on behalf of all.
Yeah, I think it's great to now have five commissioners that are committed to the employees.
Yes, sir.
And to piggyback off what Kevin said, I don't think any of us want to be in the position we were in going into that last study. You know, so let's, let's avoid that. Let's, let's just try to stay on top of it and make sure that going along, we can keep it to where we do.
We, we haven't had that, that commitment of 100% in the past, so that's, I mean, that's what we need.
I'd like to just make a few comments on what both of these commissioners have said. Uh, and that I think that's one thing that would help us in retaining employees. I, I know I had a talk with the sheriff a couple of weeks ago. We could get to the point where we could have a pay scale or a plan that allows people to know where they're going to be in five years or 10 years or 15 years. I know that we tried the midway point and we, we never made that. And so, so I was supportive of taking that away because that certainly gave, um, you know, hope where there was actually no hope. But going forward, I think Commissioner Berger, last year when we voted on the pay plan, made it very clear that we wanted a maintenance plan on the, the pay scale so that we could, we could keep people up to date without having to spend unnecessary money to do these payment plan studies. And also that we, we could let them know where they're going to be at certain times during their career or looking to keep people for an entire 30-year career at the county.
All right. And one, and I want to make sure we're clear on what we're asking for in this pay study. As we went through this pay study and we're looking at the numbers now and the concern that departments have brought up to us, is we're using job titles and descriptions that have not been updated. And we want to make sure that we are understanding what the employees do, what their job description and title means. So we truly compare to where that market is because it could be creating us deficiencies that we're just unaware of. So that is our commitment to try to make it right. An example you gave me when I first met with you and Lance after I was elected was, you gave the example of IT, what a IT department has in their budget. And you would say, well, how does this county have such an outrageous IT budget compared to us? Could you just explain that, just? As we look through, we often compare to light counties of, of our population size and things like that. So you can look at one department that has population size of us and they have an IT department, six. And the next one has an IT department of 30. Well, when you look under the hood, that department has two IT people in DSS, four people in Sheriff's Department, two at 911. So you're not looking at their general budget, so it's very hard to compare. Those job titles, also those departments, are not universal for what those people do. So I know our ITS administrators here at Rockland County, same job title at Giver County, are not even comparable jobs. And you're saying this new study would help to equalize that? Equalize that.
Well, I hope this new study would help to reduce the number of paid classifications we have anyway, if that's possible. Because I know that we have a ton of those out there and it may not be possible.
We consolidated those several years back. I mean, we, we've done pretty safe, we can still look at it and see if we can do it even more.
Well, and you may not be able to. I just know that there's a lot of, there's a lot of them out there.
I agree.
I think we're all, as you say, we're committed to, to try to make this right because we, we deal with trying to find staff in every department every, every day. So we want to make sure we're doing what's right.
I think there are some things that Reese, Matt Reese, that he can do without coming back and restarting a whole new study. As he identifies trends that are common. Agreed. You know, we've done this with, or Matt's done this for us. And now everybody's brought it. It's a matter of being consumed with this sort of activity. But my conversation with him, it's about refining what you've already done. Does that make sense?
True.
And they're doing for one for a reason right now, respect. Okay, great.
Yeah. So let's look at water sewer funds. So I've done the same type of concept, 2022 budget, 2023 adopted budget, grew salaries and benefits 5.5%. If you're operating, 7% per CPI. I don't want to talk really focus on is the debt service. Uh, right as the 23, 24 projection does have the general fund contributing to 464,004 to cover the debt service. And this is combined, this is water and sewer combined. These aren't separated, just make it easier to look at. Here is my proposal that I've, I've discussed a lot with Lance and I'll bring up now for your comments and consideration for us bring forward to you. Down below the blue, below the blue line is the existing debt service and debt that we have for the water sewer fund. The 20, and the 2020 12 installment, the first one, the principal balance left on that is 688,000. And that is, does have an early payoff option. We can pay that one off early with a small penalty, half a percent or so, no more than 1%. I would suggest that we appropriate general fund fund balance to contribute over to the water sewer fund and pay that debt off in 2023, this current fiscal year, yes, sir.
How, how long was the loan for originally?
Uh, that I don't have. Well, that was refinancing 2020, no, that was an original 2022. That was a, so it's 2022 flipped out. And so that one, we can pay off early. And I would suggest doing that 2023. And I'll tell you all, all that in a minute when I get through the, the debt. The 2011 limited obligation bonds, that was a refunded bond, it's limited obligation. It is a no-call bond. We cannot pay that off early. But next year, 2024, is the last debt service on that one. The 2020 B installment purchase was the original NTB where we issued debt for the design and engineering services for the potential of a water sewer service to the NT site.
Right.
No water or sewer asset came out of that financing. We, this debt started out at a 3, 3.7 some interest rate. We refinanced it in 2020 to get a 1.17 interest rate on it. To get that rate, we had to make that a non-callable debt. So that one, we cannot pay off early. Since there is no water sewer asset associated with this debt, I would suggest doing a booking and entry this year to move that debt from the water sewer fund over to the general fund. Because this, this one is not generating water sewer revenues to pay for that debt. So I would suggest move it to the general government debt and get it out of the water sewer fund. And I've had some preliminary conversations with my government commission staff to make sure I'm not creating any issues with them to do that and everything's, and with our bond counsel and everything seems fine with that. If I can do these pieces, if we do these, these suggested pieces, we'll have a really bad 2023 financial report for the water sewer fund. It will look really bad because we're going to transfer a lot more money from the general fund and we're going to move debt out. However, 2024 going forward, this is going to be a good fund. The financials on these funds will be good going forward. The financials on these funds will be good going forward. Um, I've had these conversations with the local government commission staff, like, by show, really, really bad twenty twenty-three year, and we will have those financial performance indicators and concerns that we will have to speak to. Um, but knowing that the ultimate goal is come twenty twenty-four financials and going forward, this fund has no debt, well, we'll cover the debt twenty twenty-four, but after that, there is no doubt, I don't foresee us issuing any debt for these funds in the anytime here, future with all the grant money that we have going on now. So that's something just bring up for your consideration, well, let over, you know, think about it, are we okay with moving forward that to get this right into twenty twenty-four?
Bottom line, the categories, the nomenclature are gonna be appropriate to the debt after you finish these activities, i.e. from water sewer open to general fund.
Yeah.
And there is no additional cost to the county doing this, we're just looking at the description of said debt and where it is.
The only additional cost that you will have is the, the prepayment penalty on the twenty twenty-two twelve debt. It's half a percent, no more than one percent. So it's minimal compared to getting out from underneath the financial performance indicators and concerns moving forward and not having to do these webinars, training. Um, it positions the fund really well moving forward.
Plus, we can indirect cost allocate from that and we can eventually get to what Kevin asked about before, start paying ourselves back at some point in time.
It's more accurate, we're gonna give it, it's more accurate description of what we're doing, the cost of water and sewer.
Yep.
Exactly, we're using general fund money now anyway to pay this, this debt. And until revenues grow more than they are right now, until we get these new customers on to a volume that creates the revenue, we're gonna keep doing that. So if we just go ahead and take the hit this year and use general fund money to pay off the one we can, move the one that doesn't have an asset associated with it, then we're good.
And you gotta have the fund balance.
Yes, sir. Uh, so Pat, with your, um, on the projection here, do you have us moving that over on the proj-, is this included in the projection?
That's not in the projection because this is something that we would do in twenty twenty-three. I would say, and here is my reason, I feel like within the next year or less probably, we're gonna be going back to the LGC to ask to issue debt for potential school debt. That's still a conversation that we're having. Um, I think the potential is there, I don't know that we will or not, but the potential's there. I would really like to.
That comment, that is for maintenance and repairs of the system.
Yes.
Not, not new.
Yes, yes. Absolutely, absolutely.
Pull, pull the record.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, because I know that we'll be going back to the local government commission, I am trying to get these financial performance indicators of the water sewer fund gone, because that's what puts us on, we can't get on their consent agenda, we have to be face-to-face to them and have a conversation.
Okay, thank you.
So that means in twenty twenty-three, we might be doing three days worth of those.
Yes, do the industry system.
But I've, I've had that previous conversation with local government commission staff, so they're fully aware that, you know, this is, if this is approved, if we bring this forward to the board and the board approves our students, that this is a strategic plan to right the system, the, the financials.
God's looking for a person.
I am.
It's certification, learn more about.
When, when, when do you intend to bring it forward?
Um, I think, well, anytime, uh, within the next few months, I can bring it forward. I just wanna have the conversation before I bring it, they will blindside you with it, right? Wanna give, give you a heads up, give you time to talk about it, express any concerns you have.
Makes total sense to me, I don't know how you guys deal with. Yeah.
My, my only concern or hesitancy is that prepayment penalty.
Yeah.
How much sense does that portion of the whole conversation make? I mean, you're certainly the financial guru, but, um, the prepayment penalty is the only thing.
Well, it's twenty-three hundred bucks, right?
So, yeah, so you have a small prepayment penalty, but you save twenty-four thousand in interest over the next three years.
Okay.
So the net will be, yeah.
That was actually why I asked earlier, when, when I was asking about how, I was basically trying to figure out how much longer we had to pay on, so if you're saying this three more years, then.
Yeah, and that's what you're seeing here, that, that is the actual amortization schedule. Those are per year, the amounts that we over, that will be paid per year on this debt.
Yes.
Well, tell us why we shouldn't approve that today.
Um, you can approve the concept, I'll need to bring a budget amendment to you to actually, at a board meeting to, to actually move all this around. But yeah, I mean, you can prove the concept for me to go ahead and finalize the details of this, and I need to get the pay, the actual payoff from that, we need to set a date and get the actual payoff.
Well, we could do all that, at the same time you bring that information to us, could we hide?
Yes.
So I, I, my recommendation was when you can get all of that finalized, just bring it to us and we do it all at that time, is that okay?
I think everybody's good with it.
Yeah.
I believe we need a motion, conceptually, we, we're all.
That's right.
Okay, yep. All right, I think that's, that's all I have.
Hi, Mr. Sheriff. Floyd. Uh, are there any other issues to be brought for this today?
Number one, budget issue, that we need to talk to staff about that. Like I've already said, the primary thing, um, on my mind and on me and mine, that conversation should.
I've got seven or eight different things to.
Two, sir. The only thing that I would like to add to what we've talked about today, my two main concerns was the polling stuff, we've already talked about that, but, um, I know that we're working very hard on mental health, um, issues and certainly we'd like to continue to keep that at the forefront of our thoughts as we go through the budget session a few months, but I believe that we're definitely in a time where we need to start bearing down on the fact that we're gonna need some kind of, um, resource here in the county to do with that and opioid crisis too.
Okay.
Well, most of you know we're gonna have some conversations on Monday, but things that would cause an amendment to what we've done today are probably not gonna be on the table at all. We're talking about using.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Any other direction?
Houston, Charles? All right, I was just, uh, Don and I are on the same page with the mental health open with stuff, so he spoke for me on that, so that was my main concern going forward.
Okay.
I'd just like to say, I, I appreciate staff putting this together, giving us some good, high-level summaries of things. I know there's a lot of data that banks it up, but I appreciate it.
Kevin, anything else?
Berger? Well, Stephanie, you're here and I, I wanna publicly recognize you for some really good stuff, I think, as far as keeping us, uh, informed on HR and as you as a general concept, your concerns as far as, uh, personnel who are working for the county, shortages that they're for.
So my general concerns for staffing, they're still there and they're still, you know, they're larger leads in some agencies versus others, of course, but we're getting there. For our emergency services, it is going to take some time to get that academy to really pay off as far as staffing goes. Um, so that is the number one, I guess, mandate, if, exactly, we have right now as our staff that is really bleeding. Uh, secondly would be social services, but social services is always going to be a higher, um, group of vacant positions because it's the largest department that you have, so it's, it's always going to usually have the most turnover. Um, social worker wise, we're better than we were a year ago. Uh, entry level as far as incoming as case workers, we're better than we were a year ago, but it's still gonna take some time to get those people trained. Um, if we hired them all today, you know, you're looking at a year before IMC worker is up and running proficiently with software where you wouldn't have to be there, uh, for questions. Uh, same with your EMTs, your paramedics, even though they're out of school, you know, they come here, they've got to be trained to do it our way. So we're hoping that the academy will at least alleviate that, so if we get our academy folks here to, to stay here. Uh, vacancies wise, we were over a hundred this time last year and yesterday at lunchtime, we're down to forty-seven. That's a moving target, it changes every day, it might have changed since I got these numbers in this report yesterday, but I will have to say that's better than it was. And when I say forty-seven vacancies, those are active vacancies that we are trying to recruit for. Um, there are people coming down the pipes right now as far as, you know, we've made job offers too, where we've done interviews and we're waiting to make job offers, but that's got to be better than what we were.
Very encouraging. Yeah.
I, I talked to Trey over there, he is somewhat concerned, no, he's a lot concerned about banning for his mobile dental unit. Has he talked to you about that?
Mm-hmm, we actually have interviews scheduled for that, um, next Friday and the following Monday, but what we've run into is we thought we had some really good candidates that were super, super interested, but I think that first pool of candidates might have, um, had the misconception that they would be working perhaps the school calendar because the mobile dental unit's gonna be set up predominantly at the schools, at the elementary schools, um, when in fact, that's not the case, they're not gonna have the summer time because, you know, when schools close, we can use that mobile dental unit at other places throughout the county to serve, you know, different populations of people. Um, so he's tried to make that very clear in the most recent postings and advertisements. Uh, we're gonna do the interviews on the actual mobile dental unit so that the folks can see, hey, this is where you're gonna be, this is what it looks like, this is where you're gonna be at the majority of your time every day. Um, it's gonna be a thirty-two hour week position, we've tried to clarify that, it's not always going to be a Friday off because depending on the school calendar and when, uh, teacher workdays are, it might not always be Friday off, so we wanted to make sure that that wasn't a misconception because as you know, in the dental world, lots of times the dentist office is closed on Fridays. But yes, that is a big, oh, there is a concern is, uh, getting that staffed.
You guys have any questions?
The only thing I'd like to say in closing is thank you guys for what you do. I think we have a great team here in the county. Uh, I think that shows in the numbers that you've brought forward today, your numbers. Last year, we were battling all the vacancies, trying to figure out what we could do and, um, I think, but things are moving in the right direction. Thank you guys for doing that.
I'll add one thing, when reviewing, um, department, always look at caseloads. Some departments have statutory requirements with regards to caseloads for our employees, some do not, and I know in some departments, those caseloads are astronomical, um, and that again gets to employee what they, and, uh, really the service where we're divided, so if we can look at those caseloads, see what's practical with the actual headway when making a determination of whether or not something is needed, um, as far as additional slots.
Do we have anybody to carry this on further? Don't you wanna say something to the group? Like the sheriff?
Why should we adjourn?
Two seconds, all the way.